...a public hearing, we're going to move back to this morning's regular agenda and pick up item fifty-two, which was our next item on the agenda. So, anybody who's here for the public hearing, you've got several hours till we get back to you because we have sixty speakers. Yes, we left with fifty-nine, but there was one hiding under the pile. So, we have sixty speakers. You each have two minutes. I don't need to tell you what that means in terms of time. So, if there is someone who has said something that you feel is the same to help us move through and get to the place where we can actually have a discussion of the board and take a vote and put your minds at ease, or not, depending on what happens today and how you feel about it, then the better we'll be able to move along. So, with that, first I wanted to make sure to my colleagues that no one objects to recessing the public hearing and moving to the item fifty-two on the regular hearing. Okay. The next, the now next step is for me to recognize my colleague Vice Mayor Sharif to kind of set the stage for this item, how it came here and what it is that she's hoping to accomplish. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and colleagues, for allowing me to introduce my item. If possible, I'd like to discuss and introduce these items together and take two separate votes as both items, motion A and B, are critically important. For residents in the audience today, I recognize many are passionate on both sides of the issue. So, I would request upfront that we all remain courteous and respectful of each other's opinion. You can disagree without being disagreeable, and you can be supportive without bashing the other side. I also will take the next few minutes, Mayor and colleagues, to clear up a lot of the misinformation in agenda items that I've presented. First of all, I'm the mother of five young kids, ages fourteen, thirteen, twelve, eleven, and five. I have the right to be concerned for their public safety and for the safety of all residents in Broward County. A recent study by the Journal of American Medical Association found that ninety-four percent of the attacks on children by pit bulls were unprovoked, compared to forty-three percent for other breeds. Attacks by pit bulls are associated with higher hospital charges and a higher risk of death than attacks by other breeds of dogs. Strict regulation of pit bulls may be substantially, may substantially reduce the U.S. mortality rates related to dog bites. I have been on a countywide listening tour for more than a year, hearing from residents, community leaders, and elected officials about their stories from pit bull attacks and the lack of county penalties against these dog owners. Several elected officials, community leaders, and victims are present this afternoon, including Commissioner Sharon Fife, who is a longtime member of the Broward County Animal Care and Advisory Committee. She is representing Samantha Schubert as well, who is a recent victim of an attack. I appreciate any, many of our elected officials who have supported this action and who are present this morning. In motion A, I am proposing the county commission add a pit bull ban to the county's legislative program. This is a major public safety issue for residents. There have been hundreds of reported pit bull attacks in Broward County on humans and other dogs, and many have gone unreported. This is not only a problem in South County, but there have been numerous reported cases in Deerfield Beach, Davie, West Park, Hollywood, Sunrise, Millmar, Tamara, Fort Lauderdale, and Coconut Creek, to rename a few. There have been reports of two-hundred-and-seventy roaming pit bulls in Broward County due to the pit bull ban in Dade County. We have seen many of these dogs breed and make their way into Broward. Pit bull bites its prey and it doesn't release, unlike other dogs. I encourage you to keep, and I think you should sit down and wait a minute because we're going to hear from you. I encourage you to keep in mind the members of county's animal care and adoption division only provide a small snapshot of the larger issue because many cases go unreported, but we see these innocent victims on the evening news and we share their stories. Colleagues, I am very open to compromise and flexible language on sending this to the legislature. Several mayors and commissioners have called me over the weekend asking for flexibility to lift the ban at the state level, but also allowing a final vote by local municipalities on a pit bull ban. I can support this friendly amendment to the recommend, to the recommendation in front of you. I hope that this middle ground can attract at least four of the votes, asking for home rule authority for each city or county commission to make the final decision. This is also the position supported by the City of Hollywood. I believe each of you should have received this update late yesterday because they sent information. If the state legislature acts, my intent is to allow existing pit bulls that are properly licensed and vaccinated to be grandfathered in and allow local governments the authority to enact their own remedy for pit bulls. Let me repeat, motion A does not impact current pit bulls as misreported in several media outlets. In motion B, I am recommending the county strengthen its penalties for teaching a dog to fight and for fighting dogs. American pit bull terriers constitute the majority of the dogs used for illegal fighting in the United States. Currently in Broward County, there is a sliding scale for penalties. I am proposing a standard fee of five hundred dollars for each occurrence, which is the highest permissible by law. The current cost structure is three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for the first offense and five-hundred-and-twelve dollars and fifty cents for each occurrence thereafter, including a twelve-dollar-and-fifty-cents administrative fee for processing. My proposal would increase the penalty. The current penalty on owners is very weak, and I'm asking for support to strengthen these penalties. Also, currently, there is a sliding scale for non-licensed and non-vaccinated dogs. The first occurrence is a fee of sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. The second occurrence is a fee of eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. The third occurrence is a fee of one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. The fourth occurrence fee is three-hundred dollars. I am proposing a three-hundred-dollar standard fee. The goal is not to make this penalty as severe as teaching dogs to fight and fighting dogs because many of these individuals are responsible dog owners. However, we need to strengthen the county's position on encouraging getting all dogs licensed and vaccinated. In closing, I'm an animal lover and have a track record of supporting responsible laws. In the City of Millmar in two thousand and ten, I co-sponsored a tethering ordinance to work with local activists and community leaders, even being featured on the cover of Paul's Prince and with the Humane Society of Broward. Not all dogs are bad, but I have a problem with pit bulls who harm people and other animals. I have a problem with owners who teach their dogs to fight and who fight dogs in our community. The Center for Disease Control says that dog bites, dog bites are national health care risk, and as the Health and Human Services Commissioner, this is a major problem that needs to be addressed. I am hoping and asking that each of you support one on, on each item and the compromise for motion A, allowing lifting the ban with final home rule authority by the local municipality and or county commission, which allows each respect. Lastly, colleagues, similar to the discussion we just had on item seven, which passed by an overwhelming majority vote, allowing home rule authority and decision-making by our cities, I hope we could be consistent in supporting both items and allow our local leaders the ability to make decisions for their local neighborhoods. I thank you for your time and for listening, and I look forward to a very positive discussion here today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, so we have lots of speakers, and I have, I want to remind everyone that we have taken this item up, so if anyone comes in to sign a form, we cannot take any more forms. What we have is what we have. All right, so they are not in any order other than the order in which people came in. So, there's been some requests for people to take things out of order. They're in the order that people turned them in to be, to give respect to those who were here first. So, our really first speaker is Pemberkind's Commissioner Angelo Castillo. Commissioner, are you here?
I think he's there.
Okay, he might be gone. And if I call your name, by the way, and you're not here, I'm going to slide you to the back end of the pile in case there's somebody that's still out to lunch that's on their way back, and we'll try them again. If someone happens to know, however, that someone is not here, not coming back, if you would let me know, that's good, then we won't have to go through reading your name. Okay, so next is West Park Commissioner Sharon Fife. Moving right along, Thomas Dorsett. There you are. Okay, followed by Pemberkind's Mayor Ashura Mohammed, and followed by Rhonda Cundy. All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Thomas Dorsett. I'm Commissioner, City of West Park. I'm here to support the initiative of our Commissioner to have this issue break to a head. I know that people have serious feeling about the animal. I do too. But we must place human above animal in all cases. I am here to support our Commissioner because of the, of the ban in Dade County, we in West Park become the holding place for pit bull because they can't keep them in Dade County.
We do.
I am of the opinion, if we have home rule, we should be able to rule our own. I think this is the right thing to do, to take it to the legislature and let them make the decision to allow us to operate in our home. I'm calling our city our home, and I'm expecting all of you Commissioners, who are my friends, who I know for years and years, even before I become Commissioner, to help support our Commissioner in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Rhonda Coon, is it Coon, Cundy? Rhonda?
I'm Rhonda.
Oh, Rhonda, is that?
We have her.
Rhonda. Rhonda, okay, Rhonda, followed by Donna Beederman, followed by Sharon Carmichael.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much, Barbara, for hearing this subject. I have presented myself in front of the commission before when we had the Dangerous and Vicious Dog Act that was enhanced to be like the states. In January of two thousand and eleven, my husband was attacked by a pit bull as he was walking our dog in the neighborhood. Our dog's a twenty-one-pound combination dachshund terrier dog. When my husband saw the pit bull making a beeline for our dog, he reached down, picked up our dog, got him up as far as his waist, and the dog latched onto my husband's hand, as you can see in the photograph. Thank goodness the dog bit sideways on my husband's hand and not through his hand, so it didn't rupture any tendons in his hand. The dog happened to be owned by a sexual offender that moved to our neighborhood when he got out of prison after fifteen years. He's not even a citizen of the United States, so we will not deport him because he's from a communistic country. So, we have to support him. He violated his probation by having his dogs in the backyard and being unsupervised when they got out. He, he ended up having a monitor put on his ankle for the dog bite. The sexual offender position didn't give him a monitor, but the dog bite did. I encourage us to do something because it only takes one child to have their face bit and they're scarred for life. A person has the right to not be discriminated against, but an animal is not protected on discrimination rights. The Constitution protects people, not animals. Animals come under the jurisdiction of police to be, as a law, and the police have the right to confiscate an animal if it brings harm to a person. I thank you once again. I know it's a very contentious issue. I have friends who have pit bulls. I love animals. I love all dogs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And to the audience, to the audience, I will not understand me well to every member of this audience. I will no longer tolerate cat calls from the audience. You will give the speaker the respect you yourself want, or you will not be in this room. Understood? I will not tolerate it. That behavior just now was unacceptable. We are not going to run a meeting this way. All right. Sorry to be so tough about it, but that was totally not fair. All right, next up is Donna Beederman, followed by Sharon Carmichael, followed by Susan Fisher.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I would like to first start by offering my heartfelt respect to all the victims that have been hurt by anyone, criminal or dog, large dog, small dog, or any dog. But I also would like, and I know Rhonda personally, and, and my heart goes out to Rhonda and her husband, but I'm here in support of the Florida legislation that has a ban on breed-specific legislation. I hope that the commission would not opt for home rule on this because it just puts the voice in Tallahassee, and of course, three tries at a repeal later, it hasn't happened. But I encourage Broward County to uphold the owner's rights. Somebody in the audience previously suggested that the human's feelings should come before that of a dog. Well, my feelings are, I would like the opportunity to own any breed that I want as a responsible dog owner that doesn't allow my dog to hurt anyone else. And if I do, I deserve to pay the penalty for those actions, and I will take responsibility as a responsible dog owner. Please, don't ban the breed. Punish the owners that are irresponsible, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, audience, audience, come on, let's play next. Okay. Uh... Donna, no, that was Donna. Sharon Carmichael, followed by Susan Fisher. Okay, Susan, we'll set Sharon back in the pile.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm, I'm very upset and taken back that this is even an issue. My father fought for the freedom of this country, for us to be citizens of the United States and have the right to own any dog or animal that we wish to own. As an owner, the owners need to be responsible for their animals. These animals have been around, I don't, I don't know if you realize the rich history from, you know, the General Patton to President Roosevelt and Lincoln and Helen Keller. These dogs have been around for years, and nobody's ever, hundreds of years, nobody's ever, ever heard anything about them. Why? Because they're great animals. It's the owner. We should not have to suffer, and, 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 I mean, these are our children. You know, you guys are worried about your children. I'm worried about my children. I can walk my dog very responsibly, and I have a little Shih Tzu that comes running towards my dog, and now it's my responsibility because that dog is a third the size of my dog. Is that fair? No. So, the people with the little dogs also need to realize that it's their responsibility, and they need to be responsible for their animals. It's not the pit bull breed. You have to see that. I mean, like I said, for hundreds of years, these dogs have been around, and there are more people who were struck by lightning in Florida than there are being hit by pit bulls or being, or, you know, have an incident with pit bulls. The media here, thanks to you guys, we only hear about pit bulls. We didn't hear about the postal lady who got her arm ripped off by a Rottweiler. We didn't hear about the three-year-olds who got their face bit off by a Ming pin. We don't hear about those things because the media decides to brainwash everybody. I'm sorry, the media decides to brainwash everybody, and they only publicize what they're going to get the best reaction from, and that's the pit bulls. You guys need to take responsibility and, and start doing the right thing and report all the dog incidences, not discriminate against the pit bulls. It's discrimination. This is not what my father went through war for, and I don't think any of you want to give up your civil rights as a human being in the United States.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, our next speaker is Rachel Gray, followed by Corey, Corey, I can't read all the letters in your last name, Fer, Fergan? Uh, so if there's a Corey here, or Carrie perhaps, and then followed by Tony Beyonce.
Day signal, hand signal. She's been around numerous children, dogs, other animals for years, never had a problem. She's been attacked on numerous occasions by little dogs. I was in an apartment one day where three of them came up to me, and I had to pick up my forty-five, fifty-pound dog because three of them were all nipping at her at the same time. So, I have seen a lot of aggression on little dogs. Again, like many people said today, it's about the owners, you know, just like parents. If you raise your kids right and you treat them fairly and you show them what the right thing to do, they will more likely turn out to be well-behaved. I also want to address some statistics here. Commissioner Sharif, you mentioned about the locking, uh, uh, Sharif, I'm sorry, locking jaws. You know, there is a, I have an article here, and I can pass these out to the commission, which actually cites a study from the University of Georgia where the doctor said, there's no such thing, there's no morphological, there's no enzyme speech or anything that shows that these exist in these animals, and I have them right here. I'd also like to talk about World War One. The most decorated dog ever was Sergeant Stubby. To this day, met three presidents, is in a Smithsonian Institution. It was a pit bull mix that over in the war assisted people. It wasn't a fighting dog. It assisted and saved lives, anything from, you know, people being attacked by the Germans, the gases coming in, all those things. And as you can tell today, you're going to hear from a lot of emotional people about this. And emotional just as you may be emotional about your children. As a person of color, who is part Latino and grown up, I can tell you, treating animals and the way they look and sound is no different than treating people. So, I ask you to consider this legislation and get the facts.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, Bruce Muntz, did I hear you were here? You are. Okay, next is Sonia Malinari, followed by Micah Malinari.
Hi, thanks for letting me have a chance to speak to you. I'm with the Fort Lauderdale Doberman Rescue League. We've been training dogs for over twenty-five years in Fort Lauderdale. I've been with them for six years, and we've never had any problems with the pit bulls. They're wonderful dogs, family dogs, and this is just a form of discrimination. I'm afraid that what's next? It's pit bulls now? I have a Doberman Pinscher, and that'll be what's next on the list. So, it's going to end sometime, and now is the time. So, think about it, and please, don't ban any breed.
Thank you. Thanks for your brevity. Okay, next is Sonia Malinari, followed by Micah.
Hey there. I'll try not to be emotional because I'm very emotional about this.
It's okay, you're welcome to be emotional if you want.
You guys are really lucky that you have all these people because these are the good owners. All the twenty-two-hundred people that signed those petitions are the four thousand. Those are the good people. These are the people fighting for these dogs. The problem is if you, whatever you guys are proposing, if you take the dogs and you ban them, and you can't adopt them in the shelters, and you can't, the rescue groups can't rescue them anymore, where do they go? They go in the streets. Criminals, they don't vote, they're not the good owners. They're going to take these dogs because they're smart, they're loyal, and they'll fight for you to make you happy. And if you put that in a bad way, criminals will take them, and they're going to fight them, they're going to abuse them, and guess what? They're going to abandon them and put them in the streets and the bad neighborhoods. So, if you take the option for good people to own these dogs and take care of them and trust us to make them into good dogs, I have a fight with American Staffordshire Terrier. He's amazing. I, years ago, my husband wanted to bring my dog into our life, and I said, a pit bull? Are you crazy? No way, it's not going to happen. Took him three days for that dog to steal my heart. He is amazing. He went hard to fly. I have another French Bulldog. I've had him since he was three months old. They play together. He wins my sixty-five-year-old mother-in-law's heart. Everybody loves this dog. I just, I hope you guys make the right decisions. I know you guys are going to try to go after the people who are abusing these dogs, and naturally, you need to focus your effort. Mrs. Sharif, I asked you earlier, go to the shelters, look at these dogs, sit, to the Saturday, and sit in a dog park in Fort Lauderdale and observe your surroundings. I take my little dog there all the time, and all the pit bulls are playing, they're happy. It's amazing to see that. It's something you won't see in Miami-Dade, which is why I left, and I will never go back as long as that ban exists. But observe, it's always the other dogs that are causing the problem. You might get bit by a dog, but that could be any dog. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Micah, followed by Darcy Beckus, Beck, Beck, Beckus, followed by Barbara Kent.
I usually don't first off say, that's my girl. Uh, my wife is the, the person behind, I know there's many, but just specifically the change veteran petition. And I want to use my two minutes to just specifically read a few of the notes that she got on that petition from Broward County residents. And mind you, there was not one negative note, and sometimes on positions, you get both position, but we did not get one negative note. I'll start with this. "I'm moving back to Florida and May, and I'm sicking that Broward County would even consider this kind of ban. It is wrong, sincerely, Debbie Bradford, Hilo Hawaii. How medieval is it to think that banning a breed will solve the problem? It hasn't helped. Dade County only killed thousands of beautiful dogs. Sincerely, Sharon Carmichael, Pemberkind's, Florida. Because pit bulls are my love and I cannot live without such an amazing breed near my side, I signed this petition with all my heart. Carlos Nor, Carlos Noriega, Pemberkind's, Florida. This will determine if my family vacations here. I for one have admitted the entire state of Florida. It is sad, when banning a family pet determines whether family will vacation, I for one will let this be a factor. Eddie from Davenport, New York." Listen, guys, I have pages and pages and pages, Coral Springs, Davie, Plantation, Cooper City, Fort Lauderdale. I live in Fort Lauderdale. My wife lives in Fort Lauderdale, thank God. All over this beautiful county that for thirty years I have called home and took this woman who for thirty years herself lived in Miami-Dade County and convinced her, because right after the ban happened in Dade, I was like, listen, let's just move to Broward. I've been there for thirty years. This is a more understanding, realistic, and sane county. So, please, come to my home. I brought her here. Six months later, look, look what happens. I'm just going to end with this. Listen, you, you can have, saying banning pit bulls is like saying you're going to ban a sledgehammer because it's a bigger and stronger type of hammer. But with any type of hammer, I could do two things. I could kill someone, and I could build a house that would sustain life. But in each type of scenario, it's the person behind the hammer that is wielding the power and making the decision. So, please, don't ban my sledgehammer.
Okay, next is Darcy Beckus.
You got it right.
I did. Okay, followed by Barbara Kent.
I have been a Broward County resident for over twenty-two years in District Five. I stand in front of you today to speak on behalf of our animals that have no voice. And today, I speak on behalf of a specific breed, the pit bull. I do not own one personally. However, I do own three dogs of my own. My objective to come and speak to you today is to speak about the stereotyping of this amazing breed. These are dogs that are loyal, aim to please their master, and no doubt, extremely strong. Just looking at a pit bull, one might think of intimidating and scary-looking. You are looking at a person that once felt that way. As I entered into the world of dog rescue back in two thousand and ten, I realized that this specific breed, the pit bull, was getting a bad rap. After meeting other dog lovers within rescue, I found myself getting more and more comfortable with the breed as well as other bully breeds. Upon entering into this newfound world, I was hearing about dogs being abused, neglected, dumped, and abandoned by their irresponsible owners, most by way of the social media. Then what really hit home was seeing postings using dogs being used as bait. Bait dogs? What the heck is that? I have no idea. Dog fighting? What type of person could do this to an animal? I asked many of those that had many more years of rescue than I did. My thoughts of the breed started me looking at the owner and not the animal. I gathered up the courage to read the book by Jim Garant, senior writer for Sports Illustrated. The name of the book is called The Last Dogs: The Rescue and Redemption of Michael Vick's Dogs. Very difficult to read, but I forged ahead. I read the books from cover, I read the book from cover to cover. This book changed my thinking on the pit bull breed. Take Johnny Justice, a fighting dog that now turned into a therapy dog. Johnny Justice, at the time when this book was released, works with small children who are fearful and shy to read out loud. The program is called Pause for Tal's Program. The program works by having Johnny Justice sit with the child and listen as a young child reads to Johnny in a local library. If the child chooses to sit on the floor, the dog knows to sit beside him and look at the book like he is following.
Darcy, I'm sorry, I'm on a roll. And that's it? I know, two minutes.
I thought we had three minutes.
Two minutes goes by fast, doesn't it?
It does, all right. But anyhow, thank you so much, and please do the right thing.
Thank you. Okay, Barbara Kent, you're up next, followed by Dahlia Keynes, followed by Randy Sands.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Breed-specific legislation fails because it does not address the real issue, which is irresponsible dog ownership. Breed-specific legislation places all the blame on the dogs, ignoring the responsibility of the dog owner. Dog ownership is a responsibility, and dog owners must be held accountable for the actions of their dogs. Restricting breeds of dogs does not address this issue. Only when irresponsible owners are held accountable for their dog's actions will adverse dog incidents be reduced. According to the Center for Disease Control and the American Veterinary Medical Association, both respected organizations support responsible dog ownership as the key factor in reducing dog bites. Breed-specific legislation unfairly penalizes the responsible owners who have properly trained, socialized, care, and supervised their dogs. socialized, care, and supervised their dogs. Restricting breeds of dogs does little, if anything, to protect citizens. Not only do breed bans perpetuate the myth that certain breeds are inherently bad, but it also indemnifies all of the other breeds as being safe by exclusion. And in doing so, breed specific, breed specific legislation misleads the public and promotes a false sense of security. It's also very expensive. To implement breed-specific legislation, you'll need additional funding for animal control, shelter fees, vetting, and litigation. I ask that you oppose the proposal because any such law that is specific to breed does not address the real problem, which is that of irresponsible owners. I trust that you will take into consideration the position of many well-known prestigious organizations, such as the Amer- American Kennel Club, the American Veterinary Medical Association, the National American Animal Control Association, and the National Canine Research Council, who do not support legislation that targets any specific breed of dog.
Sorry, Dahlia Keynes, followed by Randy Sands, followed by Sahrel, I think, Silva?
Hello, hey, okay. Good morning, Commissioner. How about it?
Afternoon.
Go ahead, come on in. Alright, my name is Dahlia Keynes, and the director and founder for the Miami Coalition Against Breed-Specific Legislation. We are here today because this commission thinks it has a pit bull problem. Let us state, we do not, we do not have a pit bull problem. You have a spay problem, an animal of this problem, a dog fighting problem, an irresponsible ownership problem, but we do not have a pit bull problem. Explain to us here today how this could possibly be. One, and I quote, Ms. Carrie Williams, the author of "The Pitbull Policy," "Any evaluation based on visual identification is speculation." In other words, you cannot even identify the breed, so how is it a problem? BSL just does not work. There are no existing scientific facts or data into further disservice. It has not worked on any place that has a mat there, and certainly not in Miami-Dade County. As a matter of fact, during the August 2012 elections, when this matter was put in the ballot, five, five commissioners along with Miami-Dade Animal Services Code Enforcement Manager publicly stated, they were in favor of its removal. We are all familiar with "Matters Against Drunk Driving," whose mission is to stop drunk driving. Notice, it was Mothers Against Drunk Driving, not Mothers Against Drunken Vehicles. Look at the end of the leash, it was not the dog, folks. Earlier, I noticed Commissioner Lexer previously mentioned while discussing with the matter that it was critical. Since education and awareness are the key tools here, I am firmly inviting the entire commission in this police department to attend a dog bite seminar by John Cosby, who is the nation's leading expert on dog bite attacks. It will be held on April twenty-fifth of December in Miami in response by the United Nations and Miami Coalition. Full charge, all you have to do is register. There comes a time, there comes a time when this petition, that is not safe. Not politic, not popular, but one must take it simply because it is right, not withstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Dahlia. Okay, next speaker, Randy Sands, followed by Sa- Saurel Silva, followed by Ricardo Oliverios, I think?
Good afternoon. I wanna start off by saying my song of the day is "Ain't No Stopin' Us Now" by McFattin and Whitehead.
I thought it might be who let the dogs out.
No, no. My name's Randy Sands, I'm the owner of Artistic Clips Mobile Grooming. Because a lot of what I had to say has been said, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna welcome each and every one of you to come and take a close look at me. I've got two holes, Jack Russell Terrier. December, I had this forearm laid open, this thumb laid open, as you can probably all see, it's still not gone. Golden Retriever. Have I ever been bit by a pit bull? Absolutely not, not even close. I've owned him for forty years, I'm gonna be fifty years in April. And I also, if you look at my website, I specialize in grooming aggressive dogs. Not one of my aggressive clients is a pit bull. Now, what I'd like to address to you specifically is this ban is discrimination. I was raised in a family of eleven black kids. To this day, we all love each other very much. You wouldn't like it if we proposed a ban to have black people who moved from Broward County. Why? Because it would be absolutely wrong. It would not be the right thing to do. We cannot discriminate. And with that said, I'd like your five kids to come spend an afternoon with me, and I guarantee you at the end of that, your opinion would be different.
My five kids would spend an afternoon with you, because I don't wanna teach my five kids to compare racism to dogs.
Well, it's the same thing, it's the same analogy. And I could care less, we're not cooperating that today.
I think a more graceful analogy could have been found.
Discrimination across the board.
You could have found something else.
I think there's other more graceful analogies that could have been found.
Well, that would be, but that's the one that I have right now. And I am not racist, like I said, I am still very close with all of them, I'm still very active in the black community.
Thank you, Randy.
But it is what it is.
Thank you, Randy. Alright, Zarell Silva, followed by Ricardo Oliverios, followed by Marnie Bell-Baladia.
Good afternoon, my name is Sharel Sinua.
Oh my, say it again.
Sharel.
Sure. Sorry, I messed that one up, big time.
It's okay. And I come from beautiful District Eight. I actually agree with what Ms. Vice Mayor Sharif is trying to do, her intentions are noble. She's trying to stop aggressive dog attacks. What I have a problem with, um, in this legislature is two things. One, I believe that, uh, A, targets a specific breed, um, excuse me, sorry. It, it's targeting a specific breed when your purpose is to stop aggressive dog attacks. Specific breed is not actually, you know, linked up with that. I believe the vocabulary we propose into the state is what's wrong. If you would propose a ban on aggressive dogs, where we target those, then I believe that we would have probably a better chance of stopping these vicious dog attacks. I think that you hit it on the nose on Part B. I believe that we do need to increase the fines for having off-leash dogs, for training dogs, and I believe that's where we should focus our attention. We shouldn't try to go specifically against one type of dog, because that will displace dogs that aren't living homes, as some of the people here have emotionally came out and said. I think that we need to ask the state of Florida not to ban a specific breed, but to allow us to increase the fines for teaching dogs how to, you know, attacking and for being aggressive. Five hundred dollars, though, for me is not enough. Five hundred dollars for a person who's illegally gambling on these dogs, on these breed animals, i- it's a slap on the wrist. If we're gonna use our efforts, our taxpayer money, to do anything, we should ask for a lot stricter penalties, especially since, as you've said before, we're kind of a dumping ground for these animals, where they're being picked up by other people and probably used for the same thing. I know I got my dog Mumble from the Broward, um, shelters, and at first I was a little hesitant, but like most of these people, he's one I have over, and I've noticed that most of the negative things that are said about these animals are actually not true. Most of the things that make these animals dangerous are also what makes them great animals. Uh, they're temacious, probably why you believe of the Laj- the Lajjal myth, um, extremely loyal, and extremely sweet. Thank you very much for your time.
Just one question for you. Can you, um, get your information to, um, my chief of staff so that you can, um, help us on this as well? I think you had some great ideas, and you brought some solutions, and I'm, I'm willing to entertain those. So, my chief of staff is right there, could you please see him and give you your information?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Next is Ricardo Oliverios, Marnie Balavia, followed by Amy McMahon.
Alright, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I don't have anything written down, I don't have any stats or anything like that. I'm a new, uh, pit owner, December twenty-second, got it from, uh, Lobos in Broward over here. I know they're here somewhere, can't share. Okay. Um, I think you guys know that this is just wrong. I don't have to lecture you about it, we're all grown adults, right? It's just wrong. Why, why would you even bother to entertain something like this? And I agree with everyone else here, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet, and that's it. Just what I had in my say in it, alright? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker, Marnie Balavia. Did I say that right?
Balavia, but that's okay.
Balavia.
Thank you, good afternoon. Um, I work for the Broward County Humane Society, I'm the manager of the animal assisted therapy program there. Um, my job is to temperament test dogs and to place them in therapy programs where they are going to be out in our community, working in schools, hospitals, nursing homes, senior facilities, and all other areas. Um, one of the things I wanted to remind everybody is that it's critical to remember first and foremost that any dog can bite. It doesn't matter what breed the dog is, a dog is a dog is a dog. Any dog can bite, any dog can kill, any dog can harmless, uh, harm somebody. The breed makes no difference whatsoever. Um, the neat side of Broward County's position is that we are against discriminating against any one breed. Instead, we are in favor of making stricter laws regarding irresponsible owners. Most dog attacks by bully breeds and dogs in general are dogs that are not spayed or neutered. Something has to change in that, in that arena where that, that is, people are held accountable for spaying and neutering their pets, um, not kept inside the home and are very undersocialized. In addition, many pit bulls, as we mentioned, are used for training and fighting. We are totally against that, and we would love to see that come to an end. Your typical pit bull, it, that is bred and raised properly, is a friendly clown-like dog with very social, loving personality. I own two of my own, along with a mini Aussie and, and an Australian Shepherd, a Sheltie, a Ferret, and two cats, and an eleven-year-old stepdaughter. What I would love to see is some education with the funding for the education, because really, I'm not, I'm not against holding people accountable, but you're holding wrong people accountable. We are responsible dog owners, we do the right thing with our dogs. The people that need to be held accountable are the irresponsible dog owners. Breed bans have proven ineffective, we need harsher penalties, and we need to hold owners accountable. Breed bans affect law-abiding, responsible dog owners like me, and at the end of the day, it's discrimination. No matter how you slice and dice it, breed bans don't work, it's proven that they don't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marnie. And for anyone in counting, uh, Marnie, I think we had you beat. In my house, raising three kids, we had thirteen different species at one time in our house. Not only species of dog, I mean of different animals unrelated in the species chain. Um, okay, next up, Mayor.
Marnie, can you see Tori and give him your information so we can get the, your...
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Amy McMahon, with very good handwriting, I might add. Followed by Charlotte Vee, who is, actually Charlotte Vee and Don Anthony. Very easy to read, your names. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, I understand that the basis, at least in part, for wanting to ban pit bulls in Broward County is the roaming dog issue in some of our neighborhoods, and you're right, there is a problem. I see it often in my line of work as a Broward County transit bus operator. On September tenth of two thousand and ten, I saw a dog in the middle of the street in the northwest section of Fort Lauderdale. I pulled over, went to her, she was emaciated, filthy and smelly, clearly abandoned, but very sweet. I pick her up and I took her home. Today's Sophie is almost a three-year-old, beautiful, sweet, affectionate, darling, sixty-five-pound female pit bull. On September thirtieth of this year, I adopted Roxy. She was also found on the street in the southwest section of Dixie Highway in Pompano. After five months of being in my care, she was timid, frightened, and shy. Today, she is a beautiful, sweet, darling, loving pet. Neither of my dogs show any aggression whatsoever despite their beginnings of being out on the street. The problem is the people. The people who breed them for fighting or guard dogs. The dogs who do not meet the physical requirements desired by those who intend to use them for no good are tossed out like so much garbage. Thousands of responsible, law-abiding, decent Broward County residents have pit bulls and bully breed types as their beloved family pet. We take good care of them, we make sure that they're secured, properly vaccinated, they are our family. Address the issue, which is not the dogs, but the people who abuse them, overbreed them, neglect them, and use them for the wrong thing. I would be forced to leave Broward County if you enacted a ban, because I will never, never give up my goals. So please, don't enforce BSL in Broward County. Go after the people who are the problem, it's not the dogs.
Thank you. Okay, next is Charlotte Vee, followed by Don Anthony, followed by Jason Borden.
Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I've been a Broward County resident for thirty-three years, and this is my first call to the commission on a cause. I've volunteered at the Broward County Humane Society for decades, and have owned fostered work with all dog breeds from Chihuahuas to Chachas. Currently, I own two rescued handicapped dogs that some think have pit bull characteristics, including a certified therapy dog with over four hundred hours service at Joe DiMaggio's Children's Hospital and other venues. As a responsible owner who spends in excess of ten thousand dollars a year, vetting, training, and donating to fostering and pet therapy causes, I don't think anyone should be able to tell me what type of fur child I can love. Breed-specific legislation is a violation of our rights, very costly to government to enforce, punishes the wrong end of the leash, and is a proven failure in every area. I already entered into record with the secretary this morning the official statements from groups, sixteen groups, who've done massive studies on the topic, which you guys should all have, because I gave her fourteen copies. These organizations all have official statements against breed-specific legislation, including the Centers for Disease Control, the United States Humane Society, the ASPCA, and the American Bar Association. Please take a moment to review the ten pages that I provided this morning. On item B, however, I fully support stiffer penalties even than those imposed, including jail time, property looms, perhaps removing people's driver's licenses if they're repeat offenders. None of us here that love animals are gonna be for dog fighting. But you must put money back behind the enforcement of them. Animal control and our police departments do not have the funding or the time to go door-to-door and deal with these dog fighting things. I do not believe you can be a law-abiding citizen and support any aspect of dog fighting, so I support your love of B today, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, Don Anthony, followed by Jason Borden, followed by Anna Kempes.
I'm Don Anthony, Communications Director for the Animal Rights Foundation of Florida. We've got five thousand members all over the state, and we're based here in South Florida. Seems like just a couple of weeks ago, I was here supporting this commission's updating of animal protection laws, including the ban on tethering and the rules regarding guard dogs. Now, one or two members of this board want to have the ability to enact laws that even the state sees as inappropriate, namely the ability to enact breed-specific legislation. Let's remember that out of sixty-seven counties in this state, only one has enacted such a thing, and that was back in the eighties. Dade County, in a knee-jerk, inappropriate reactionary response to dog biting or dog fighting, enacted a pit bull ban, which all animal welfare groups and all dog behavioral experts say is highly arbitrary, discriminatory, and ineffective. This is not Dade County, and we don't want it to become Dade County. We don't ban all sports cars, because some of the people that drive them go a hundred miles an hour through the city. We don't need to punish the car, ban the car, but rather the driver who creates the problem. Should we punish or ban pit bulls? Because that's the type of dog that arrogant scofflaws use and abuse by making them vicious and using them for fighting? No. If pit bulls didn't exist, these same people would be abusing Rottweilers, German Shepherds, Stewarts and Pinschers, and on and on. Pit bulls have no more propensity to bite than any other dog. Quote, "There is no scientific evidence to indicate that one type of dog will bite more than another dog," said the spokesperson of the National Canine Research Council. In fact, pit bulls have tested less aggressive than other dogs, end quote. The fact is, any dog can be taught to be aggressive. The Animal Rights Foundation of Florida supports item fifty-two B, which raises fines for those who fight dogs and creates penalties for those who teach dogs to fight. It's the owner who creates the problem and who should suffer the consequences. We support item fifty-two B, which punishes those who cause the problem, not fifty-two A, which punishes the dogs who are the victims.
Mr. Anthony, can you repeat the name of your organization? Alright, really, come on. Mr. Anthony, the name of your organization again was?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
What was the name of your organization?
I'm Communications Director for the Animal Rights Foundation of Florida.
Animal Rights Foundation, I think.
Animal Rights Foundation, okay.
Alright, next up is Jason Borden, followed by Anna Kempes, followed by Diane Ratner. Hi there.
Hey, my name is Jason Borden. You don't know me, I don't know you. I'm a survivor of sexual abuse as a child. When I was sixteen years old, I found these dogs. These dogs have given me something that no alcohol would give me, no drugs would give me, no pharmaceuticals would give me. You can't take that away from me. I've helped many dogs along the way, they've helped me too. My proposition to Ms. Vice Mayor, you sponsor any dog in any shelter with any issues, and I will show you that it's the owner, not the dog. Thank you.
Okay, Anna- Okay, Anna Campos, you're up. Diane Ratner follows you, and Frank Malick.
Good afternoon, Mayans Commissioners, my name is Anna Campos and I'm a resident of Fort Lauderdale. I'm also a community organizer and animal rights activist, and I want to begin by thanking the review who voted to overturn the inhumane, dangerous dog ordinance that was recently on the books here in Broward County, and for also passing a stricter anti-tethering ordinance. You seem to be a pro-animal rights commission interested in maintaining good working relationships with residents and local animal rights groups, and for me, I deeply appreciate that. With regard to item fifty-two B, I personally would like to see even larger fines for anyone teaching or forcing dogs to fight, I think five hundred dollars is way too low, and also I, I would actually like to see lower fines on owners who have not vaccinated their dogs and for the county to work with them, perhaps there's a financial reason why they couldn't afford to vaccinate. With regard to item fifty-two, we're able to request to the state of Florida to change a twenty-three-year-old law. I do not support any ban on any dog breed with pit bull characteristics. If you haven't already, I'd like the commission to take a pulse on other residents in Broward County. As of this afternoon, over four thousand people have signed a petition on change.org and two thousand on the petition site against this proposal. The Sun Sentinel polled twenty thousand visitors to their site and over sixty percent voted against a pit bull ban. You have already heard which organizations, like the CDC and the South Florida Veterinary Medical Association, are against it, but also the American Bar Association released a statement saying these bans should be repealed. My friend's daughter was seriously bitten by a chow last month, and I have also been bitten on several animals, all of it being my fault, and it was actually my friend's fault as well. In conclusion, I just wanted to say that Mayor Jacobs was correct when she said earlier that there are more important issues going on than a dog bite issue, considering there was a dog bite shooting just a mile west of us or east of us, and there's a problem with gun violence, and these are critical issues in Broward County, and I don't believe that a dog bite is. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Okay, next, Diane Ratner, followed by Frank Malick, followed by Adrian... Hmm, I'll work on that one. Okay.
Mayor Jacobs, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I can't believe I'm doing this, but I'm going to do it for my dog and for my friends. My name is Diane Ratner. I spoke up, I marched, and I voted for civil rights in the sixties, and now I find myself doing the same thing in two thousand thirteen with a pet that I love. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, voter, and responsible pit bull owner in Broward County. Please listen to what I have to say. On July fourth, Independence Day, I adopted what I view to be one of God's greatest gifts to me, my dog Yogi, named after Yogi Bear, from Broward County Animal Services. And I really find it almost impossible to believe that the same county would now try to pass a discriminatory, discriminatory law against the same dog. Uh, that I have to say, has been said before, uh, that BSL has not worked anywhere else where it's been implemented. It's costly to enforce, it penalizes dog owners, and potentially leads to destruction of innocent dogs for nothing more than their physical appearance. This is nothing short of greedism. Many jurisdictions in America have overturned BSL, realizing they are ineffective, expensive to enforce, and inadequate to protect citizens. Breed-specific legislation is a Band-Aid that allows community dog problems to fester, focusing on breeds by name, and ignores the fact that the vast majority of dog owners are responsible and train and control their dogs. My dog cannot speak, but I can. Yogi isn't a fighter, but I am. My dog can't vote, but I can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, Frank Malick, Adrian, I said I was going to work on it, Ringerson, Ringleson?
Figueroa.
Ah, Figueroa. Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
And Frank.
And I just want to start out with giving you some facts. Uh, yesterday, uh, my Lhasa Apso was attacked. Uh, he has a bite in his ear, he's got two bites on the back of his neck. I was bit twice, and it's funny because this was a Dalmatian Beagle mix dog, and it was quite a vicious attack. So like people have said, all dogs bite, all dogs attack, and unfortunately, my dog was a victim yesterday, and it has nothing to do with a pit bull. Pit bull wasn't even in the picture. And very quickly, in addition to other breeds that are aggressive, greyhounds and Dalmatians are in that. Greyhounds of all things, I never knew that, and maybe you all should know that as well. Pits are used as therapy dogs because of their intelligence and loyalty, they're used for search and rescue, they're born with no aggression towards humans, they're taught it. The American Temperament Society did a study on non-aggression. Just who came in first, ladies and gentlemen? Your pit bull, with eighty-three point four percent, which beat the Border Collie at seventy-nine point six percent. According to the Center for Disease Control, no spayed or neutered pit has ever killed a human. A person is more likely to be killed by a family member, a falling coconut, a bedroom slipper incident, choking on a marble, drowning in a five-gallon bucket, or being struck by lightning, and again, that's from the Centers for Disease Control. So I have some solutions for you. If you're so worried about the pit bull problem, let's enforce muzzle and harnesses rather than be, um, ban the breed. Let's come up with some sort of a spay-neuter program, because yes, it is an overpopulated breed, as are most dogs in this county. And finally, we need tougher fines and jail time for these people who have fighting rings and exploit this breed. That's the bottom line. Put them in jail and end this and stop the cycle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, uh, Adrian, Figueroa?
Uh, sir?
Adrian?
Can you, sir?
Can you see Tory?
Can you see Tory? Yeah.
He can see you.
He can see you.
You see him, he sees you. Okay, so Adrian, after I named your name, you're not here? Okay, I put you in the bottom of the pile and we'll try at the end. Daniel Os, Os, Ocasio?
Yes, Ocasio.
Ocasio.
I'm a resident of Broward, Sunrise in particular. I'm a father of three, and I have four dogs, two pit bulls, an English Bulldog and a French Bulldog, and I'm a responsible owner. Motion fifty-two A is inadequate and, uh, an uneducated, band-aid solution to addressing the need of irresponsible ownership and lack of personal accountability. There is not a single credible source that supports BSL, as we heard the CDC, AVMA, AKC, Humane Society, ASPCA, the National Canine Research Council states that every proponent of breed-specific legislation relies on a ten-year-old study to make their case. Both the CDC and AVMA have warned that the findings of that study are not a base of argument for breed legislation of any kind. Breed, BSL is cruel and ineffective by affecting responsible pet owners and actions of, for the actions of the irresponsibility. It's costly, as we heard, it uses media as a source of data which they do sensationalize information, dramatize Channel Seven news. Use missing data, inability to determine risk, there's no science behind it. Now, this also causes miscategorization and misidentification. Pit bull types are often categorized as a dog of shirt, short fur, and a boxy head, which are there twenty, over twenty breeds of dogs that fit this description. Let's go through some of them. Boxer, American Bulldog, Old English Bulldog, Alapahaa Blue Blood Bulldog, Doggo Argentino, Bull Terrier, Bull Massive, Precious Canaria, Fila Brasi, Brasi Lera, I'm not too good with that one, Catahoula Leprechaun, Cana Corsa, Black-Mouth Cur, and Shar Pei's are some, of which they are also legal in Miami-Dade. In twenty-twelve, the AKC identified the Labrador Retriever as one, two, German Shepherd, and Golden Retriever three as the top dogs with the best temperaments. They passed with eighty-seven point three percent. Pit bulls, American Staffed Shot Bull Terriers, and Staffed Shot Bull Terriers passed with that same.
Thank you.
For your time and this information, I left, I left with Stacy.
Thank you. Okay, Wendy Catherine, Nicole Martin, following Wendy, and Jacqueline Winkelman?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm honored to be here not only as a long-term resident of Broward County, but as an employee of Best Friends Animal Society and on behalf of the one thousand of our members who call Broward County home. Best Friends, if you don't know, is a national nonprofit organization that is working to bring about a time of no more homeless pets. You may also know we were the organization who took in the twenty-two most vicious dogs from Michael Vick's kennels. Best Friends, myself and our members, are very concerned with communities that need to be protected from dangerous dogs, and we also want abused dogs to be protected from reckless owners. Owners who permit their dogs to run loose or allow their dogs to injure people or other animals are a problem in any community. These reckless owners, as many people have said, should be held accountable for the harm they cause. However, what we do know is that breed discriminatory law does not make communities any safer. Um, and that is why our state passed legislation, section seven, six, seven point one four, nearly twenty-five years ago. It's good law. We do know that everyone, people and pets, benefit from safer communities, and we want to advocate for policies that enhance public safety. Um, I'm not going to go into dangerous dogs because I think that's been covered, but I would like to point out that the current proposal does not address the, the over two point six million dollars that it would cost Broward County to implement this law. Information on that is in the packets that I distribute, and I'd be happy to give you more information. Uh, in this time of limited resources, we really can't afford to spend millions of dollars in our county on laws that we know are ineffective. This is America, and every American who is responsible and follows safety deserves to own the breed of dog that they want. Irresponsible owners should lose their privileges, and most of us agree with that. Best Friends would be privileged to help you, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, our next speaker, Nicole Martin, followed by Jacqueline Winkelman, followed by Susan Lee Delia.
Okay, Wendy, you can add it to our list, okay? Thank you. Diane, I hope you all are sitting up there with an open mind. Due to ignorant, irresponsible, which is downright evil, people, pit bulls are being labeled as aggressive animals and are being fought. Those same evil people are letting their dogs roam through, potentially biting an innocent person. Let's make no mistake about it, those dogs that are running loose are not the majority of pit bulls. It's media hype that's giving you that stereotype. The original type of dog that was known as a pit bull was English, Irish, and Scottish immigrants were bringing them to this country so they could be working dogs, so they could help their families protect their livestock. During World War One and World War Two, this same dog was depicted as being courageous. Now, pit bulls have historically been known as the nanny breed, taking care of toddlers and other small children because of their ability to be so gentle. And now that has changed. Now, I understand that the victims of dog bites need an answer, but banning one breed of dog is not the answer, and you're really looking for the answer in the wrong place because you can't blame a breed for the behaviors that they're learning from their human counterparts. We need to be blaming the people that are teaching these things to them. If we allow people that are charged with assault, battery, and even murder, a second chance at doing right in this world, then we should be allowing an innocent animal that's abused by these people to have a second chance too. The abuse on pit bulls has to stop here. Hold people more accountable. Prostitute animal abusers, dog thieves, and dog fighters, and give us, the families and the community of Broward County, the ability to love the animals that they've loved all along. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, audience, we're starting to wander off into the, you know, the wrong direction, so let's pull it back. Um, Jacqueline Winkelman?
Yes.
Susan Lee Ledolia, followed by Charles Keaton.
Hi there. Hi, Mayor Jacobs and the commission. Appreciate having a moment to speak. I wanted to tell you that the antiquated law that they have in Miami did not work for Miami, and that's why Weber Sharif is so upset, because now she has to deal with it in her own community. If you make breed-specific legislation in Broward, Palm Beach County will deal, it will go all the way up to state and I will move. I don't, personally, I own three pit bulls, though you could call them pit bulls, because most people don't know, most people don't even know what a pit bull is. A lot of American Bulldogs have been attacking and people call them pit bulls. There are specific guidelines for what type of dog they are, and we don't punish cars, we don't punish guns, in fact, we don't punish children that murder, we punish their owners. We're not going to outlaw children that kill, we're not going to outlaw a certain type of ethnicities that fill up our jail system just because they're a specific type. Why outlaw a dog? I'm not in a problem with you, Mike. Why outlaw a dog?
No, we're hearing it.
When they're not a specific type? I would love to defer a woman that, to a woman's diocesan. I'm quite loud, whether I have a loud speaker or not, I would love to defer my last few minutes to her, but I, since you can't do that?
No, no.
We don't want to make a bigot law in Broward County, or my money and my dogs will be leaving this county. It is costing our county more money now because of Miami's breed-specific legislation. Now, we pay to euthanize Dade County dogs. How do you propose to, with this legislation? Do that cost any more money? I heard you fighting all morning about money. This is about money. You're costing our state money if you enact this law, because we don't have enough money for our county employees. We have more employees in white collars, shirts, and I'm about...
Thank you, Jacqueline. Okay, next is, uh, Susan Lee Ledolia, uh, followed by Char, followed by Charles Keaton, followed by Rebecca, or Becky, no.
Hi, Susan. Hello.
How well did I do on your name?
No, my name is Susan L. Dolan.
Oh, oh, L, L, that's an L and a period.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't write that well.
Okay, it looked like L.I., L.I.
I have been a Broward County resident since nineteen eighty-four. Commissioner Wettler, you are my representative. I am from Cooper City. I'm an attorney, and I have been an attorney since I moved to the state in nineteen eighty-four and for nine years before that in Washington, DC. And if there's one thing I know, it's the legality of BSL, and the statistics, and the cost, and that's what I want to introduce to you today. When the Florida Legislature enacted chapter seven sixty-seven, damages by dogs, in the legislative findings that are at seven sixty-ten Florida statutes, they recognized that it was bad dog owners that caused the problem and not bad dogs. And in seven sixty-seven fourteen, it is specifically stated that home rule or specific counties or cities can do whatever they want to enhance the enforcement, but they can't ban breeds, and that's the way it stands. Now, I can also call your attention to the, uh, community police base, I'm sorry, community operating police services, and from, and white paper issued by the US Department of Justice that talks about police and how they encounter animals and how rare breed bites actually are. It's going to cost this commission or this county two point six four million dollars to enhance any breed ban, and that's not including the lawsuits that it's going to take you to fight the issue of home rule with the Broward State Legis, uh, the Florida State Legislature. It doesn't take into account the section nineteen eighty-three lawsuits that are going to be brought for wrongful confiscation or killing of dogs that you consider dangerous. So before you spend that money on enforcing BSL, which is not going to work, I suggest you take that money and you put it toward exhibit B, or, per B of your motion, and use it to punish those people who are unscrupulous abusing this breed to fight and do horrible other things to other animals.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, audience, Charles Keaton, followed by...
Well, considering we started with sixty-three, we're doing pretty good.
Sorry. Good afternoon. Bear with me, I'm a little nervous. Before I start my little, before I start my reading speech, I just want to share, pick up a piece of my weekend with you guys. I left my nineteen-month-old as a new mother for the first time over the weekend to go out... to go to a bachelorette party for a really close friend. I was freaking out. And I called Saturday morning to check how she was. And the response was, "She's fine. Sophie is by the door, has a new, has a new friend there." Sophie is 19-year-old pit bull. My name is Natalie Martin. I am a mother of a 19-month-old baby girl and two dogs that love her dearly, and she loves them right back. One of them is a three-year-old American Staffordshire I rescued. I couldn't wait for you today to plead to you to think about what will happen if BSL is enacted in Broward. The human race is one that consists of many races, just like dogs consist of many breeds. The action of one dog or human cannot be used to describe its entire breed or race. I currently drive anywhere from three to six hours a day to legally maintain my dogs. By overturning state law, you will be hurting people like me. I'm in Miami because of, I'm in Broward because of BSL. I work and go to school full-time in Miami. You will not be hurting the people with dangerous dogs. Those people will continue to maintain their dogs. I urge you today to dedicate your energy to helping all breeds of dogs, enact spay and murder, raise punishment on those that hurt any dogs, and stop people from using dogs as protection. That's why we have alarm systems. With that said, there are programs right now for spay and murder, like the SPOT program. By enacting BSL, you may not hurt me, but you will hurt those programs.
Thank you, Sharon.
And stop that dog breeding, please. That's where the problem starts.
Okay, Natalie Martin? No, I'm sorry, wrong, uh, wrong card. Stephanie Montalvo, followed by Tim Smith, followed by Dawn Hannah. Yes.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Montalvo, and I'm a voter. I'm also a business owner in Broward County. We moved everything from Miami Dade to Broward County because we thought that it was more, how should I say? Educated and realized issues in a different manner. I'm also, I volunteer a tremendous amount for Broward County. I'm a master naturalist, master gardener, habitat steward. I'm on the board of Parks and Rec in Hollywood. I serve at the South Florida Wildlife Care Center, and I rescue a ton of creatures, small to giant. I've been, have been bit by everything except bully breeds. I have a bully breed, and I will tell you that my disabled veteran husband, that dog has saved his life, and he the other way. When we got the bully breed, we got him, he's, he's pit bull mix. We got him because we live here in Broward, and the first thing we did was we got a trainer. And when the trainer saw him, he saw him in the very beginning, he had bite wounds all over his butt and his arms and his legs, and he said, "This dog is probably used as a bait dog." So he was one of those dogs that was taught to, or was in the process of being taught to fight. So is my husband. We're not going to ban him. Okay? So he was taught to fight. What we did, what we did was we trained the dog, and the dog is fine. His best friend is a two-and-a-half-pound rabbit, a dwarf rabbit, which I have eight of them. He's never bit, been aggressive to any of them, not to kids, not to thorns, not to anything. It's the people. And when I rescue animals out of backyards, I've taken dogs that are aggressive, and when they work with me and give them to somebody else, they're not aggressive anymore. It's the people. So we have to work on those people. And we just started a nonprofit organization. We got our 501(c)(3) status, and that's exactly what we're going to do. We're going to pair veterans with dogs that are in shelters. They need to come together because both of them were taught to fight, and both of them can be taught to not fight.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Tim Smith? It's Tim Smith?
Stephanie?
No. Okay, Dawn Hannah? Okay. Okay, Dawn Hannah?
Hi there. Hi there. I'm Dawn Hannah. I'm a Fort Lauderdale resident, and I'm a certified professional dog trainer. That means I deal with aggressive dogs on a daily basis. I went through some of the backup that the vice mayor provided, and I'm, I'm feeling déjà vu. I feel like, you know, Perry Thurston did this two years ago, and I'm so tired of coming up here and dealing with unvetted sensational stories that were made up to sell papers, yet we still believe this stuff. And I'm here to tell you as a professional that pit bulls are just like any other dogs. They have teeth and they will bite. And I can't believe anybody, including you, Vice Mayor, fell for the pit bull's superpower magic locking jaw theory. It doesn't exist, okay? So I empathize with people who've been victims of bites. I deal with them daily. The bill that Senator Hill and Representative Thurston got shut down, it's because cooler heads prevailed. And it's because if you had played back all the people that went up to Tallahassee to tell everybody the facts about pit bulls, we could have avoided this whole thing. And all of these people that are here doing animal rescue can go back to rescuing animals. And all these people that had to come speak that are in, you know, animal enforcement and animal care, they can go back to doing their jobs. And I do agree, Mayor, that we do have better things to do in this county. Our property values are awful. We have lots of homeless people, and we have lots of crime. And we, we have also economic things that we need to do. I need to get back to serving my clients. All these people spent the whole day here, okay? So please, um, let us go back to our fundraising, let us go back to our rescue work, and please don't bring this up again. Just rewind this and look at it again, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Tamra Chase, followed by Bonnie Flohr.
Seven years. I do have very strong beliefs in what the Vice Mayor does say and present. Our situation with that is I walk those neighborhoods, but it's not something that's going to cure it with this answer. I walked those neighborhoods this past month with postal carriers who can't deliver mail because dogs are fur-worming. Two and a half hours of walking door-to-door, not one pit bull. I got almost bit by a couple of Chihuahuas. And I'm a Chihuahua owner, quite, I know this. But it's a situation that can be helped, and we always have suggestions, and all, you know, suggestions cost money. And my suggestion would be two to three minimum animal control officers more in our budget. We have some great officers out there. They are stretched as far as they can possibly be. You know, there's people door-to-door, walking, issuing citations, and a better system for collecting these funds. Because right now, pretty much if you don't pay your fine, there's no recourse for it. There's millions of dollars out there that are not being collected. I would tell you, obviously, it's going to cost more to get animal control officers. It's going to cost a lot more for this county to investigate, to confiscate, and to eradicate pit bulls from a community, because it's never going to happen. It hasn't happened in Dade. You can drive through those areas now. They are there. And generally, only the bad folks have them. You know, responsible people leave Dade County when they want their dogs. Though, basically, you know, more animal control officers would certainly help our situation. They shouldn't be the bad guys all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, let's see who else we might have. Sharon, Sharon, can I add you? She's adding you to the list, Sharon.
Can I add you to the list?
Okay. Next on the queue, Rachel Gray. Still not here, okay. And Carrie, and we'll kind of walk, work our way around the desk. And there are a lot of great ideas that have been offered out there, and it's getting late in the day, so I'm going to ask all of you to please be brief in your comments. Let's try to move this thing forward as quickly as we can and respect the audience's time as much as we can. So thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I wanted to make sure that everybody that came to speak on this item had their opportunity to speak, and that's why I didn't alter 52A before you had your opportunity to speak. Bringing this forward is an opportunity to have a lively discussion and a positive dialogue, and we've had that for the most part today. The list that I'm compiling is of those people out there who have thought solutions forward that sound like they could work out, and some people who have some expertise in the area that I think would be helpful. If you are interested in hope and being a part of making our community safer, I wish you could just contact my office, and we'll let you know when we're going to get together. What I'm looking for is just a respectful environment where we can come up with a solution to the problem. I am willing today to set aside 52A in light of the fact that I think there's been some great ideas from this audience and from this group of people here. And like I said before, I didn't want to do that before you had your opportunity to express yourself because you've been sitting here all day long. And we know that commission meetings do not run as we all plan them to. And so our time certainly be at seven instead of at 11:30 based on the discussion with our topics. So we apologize for the fact that you had to take off your time to come here, but I can tell you that the people who've called my office and who have complained about this think that there's nothing better that I need to be doing with my time than this. And I, I, I respect your opinion, but I do also respect those who have been bitten and those who do have a problem with this in their neighborhoods. So we're going to work together as a community to come up with something to, to fix that. In terms of, I wanted to dispel some of the things that were said out there, just like you think that me believing that the pit bull's jaw will lock and will bite, and that's a myth. But some of what you guys said was a myth too. I'm, I'm looking to have responsible pet owners keep their pets. I'm not trying to get anybody to euthanize their dogs or kill their dogs. Please stop saying that, because that's not something that I wanted to do. We're not looking to ban current dogs. And what, what is inaccurate is the $2.6 million cost that keeps coming up, because what I'm asking is that each city commission would make their own decision to vote on local laws that work best for their city. That doesn't mean that every city out there is going to ban pit bulls. It doesn't mean that you have to hide your dogs. I'm not asking anybody to hide their animals. You can walk your pit bull, you can do whatever you need to do with your animal. That is not what I'm asking. What I'm trying to do is engage you in a conversation where responsible dog owners come to the table to help people who have an issue in their, in their cities and in their neighborhoods with this. I think we've achieved that today, and hopefully, when you come out, there'll be less aggression, less anger, and we can get some work done. In terms of enforcement, I think that some of the suggestions that were made were great. They were right on, and I'll be looking forward to working with you on that. In terms of the fines, I hate to break it to you, but what I took the fines to is the maximum allowable by state. So if you want me to take legislation up to try to increase those fines, you all can help us do that. Because what I took them to is the maximum allowable at this point in time. I don't think you should have a first, second, and third chance to hurt somebody or have a, irresponsible pet owner have a pet running loose in your neighborhoods. I do believe that we have discount programs for vaccination and registration of animals. And I just want you to know that I have said in the animal care court where they come when they bite, and people come when they've been bitten. And I have to tell you that the large majority of those dogs that come up in there are not registered and not vaccinated. It costs very little to get your dog registered and vaccinated, and that should be something that's a priority for any responsible pet owner, okay? In terms of, of my education on this issue, I went out for over a year trying to find out what was going on in my community and trying to get, engage my, my group of people. And I got to tell you that that Sun Sentinel poll that does not represent 64% of Broward County. There was a couple thousand names on there, and while I recognize and respect those couple thousand people's opinions, I'd like to hear from Broward County on this. And I respect your opinion, and I'd like to hear from you, but I just want you to know that when I went out in my district and we represent, I represent now just under 200,000 people, and many of them were very supportive of A and B. So while I'm going to set A aside, so we can stop discussing A for right now until we get to our meeting, I am going to keep B on the floor because it's the maximum penalty allowable, and I think that by doing that, we can start with the enforcement process and making people more responsible. So I do thank you for your time, and I appreciate my colleagues' consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sharif. Commissioner, Care.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank Vice Mayor Sharif for setting aside 52A. I think that's a very responsible manner of pursuing your, an excellent public servant. So thank you for doing that. You definitely listen to the folks out there and their concerns, and it shows why you do such an excellent job representing our community. So thank you for that. So with that said, I won't address that issue. I'm just going to move on to B. So to everyone out there know, Vice Mayor Sharif is setting aside 52A, which I will not be voting on today, though we won't be asking the legislature today to ban, to allow us to ban pit bulls.
Thank you, Commissioner Care, because Vice Mayor Sharif just said all of that.
For those of you that... I, I, I do want to say that I've never had so many women cheer for me at once, and I loved it. You know, so... So with that said, and so thank you, Vice Mayor Sharif.
I just think it's amusing that that palazzo should have belonged to Boba Shri.
It is, it's the Commissioner and Vice Mayor Sharif.
Yeah. Blake, get out of here, stupid.
Okay, with regard to the, with regard to item B, I do believe that, I do believe that item B is also incredibly responsible because what our focus really should be, and it's been said here many times, and it's also what Commissioner Sharif is trying to accomplish, is to go after bad dog owners. They're the ones that are responsible for turning dogs vicious. I'm a true believer that you can make a Maltese or a Chihuahua vicious if somebody abuses it. They're the people we need to focus on. And I think one of the most heinous things alive is when folks teach their dogs to be fighting dogs. I think it's inhumane. I think it's terrible. I think it's disgraceful. And I want to commend Commissioner Sharif for bringing item B because that will increase the fine for terrible folks who teach their dogs to fight and who also, I believe, which I also believe is animal abuse. So thank you so much. I will definitely be supportive of that, Commissioner.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam.
Commissioner Lamaca, you have the floor.
Thank you. First, I want to say that although I may disagree with the Vice Mayor and this issue being brought forward, I understand that she has a different issue in her district than some of us have in our districts. This could be due to her geographic location, proximity to a county that's perpetuating the issue by outsourcing the problem to our beautiful county. I want to thank you for setting aside the item for the time being. I think we all got a lot of emails. This issue, I set aside a folder called Pit Bulls, and I put for and against BSL. And as of, I couldn't stop to keep dragging them over because they just kept, keep coming in. 1,115 people sent an email that was against a breed-specific legislation. Eleven people were in favor. Incidentally, a lot of these emails, people include their name and address, as they should. But a lot of them claim to be pit bull owners, and they also include their Miami Dade address.
How about the ones from Minnesota? Okay, sir, let's keep it... All right. Okay, ma'am, ma'am, we're getting a little out of our decorum here, but we certainly cannot have this coming from the audience. Your time to speak has passed, and now it's the Commissioner's time.
Okay, and ultimately, what we're talking about here, and I think it was brought up by, by one of the speakers, we're talking about a breed of dog who was formerly called the nanny dog. My wife and I have chosen to share our lives with a particular breed of dog, and that's the Basenji. A lot of people don't know how, what that is, how to spell it, and asked me to repeat that. But the dogs in the hound group were native to the Congo region of Africa. They were about 25 pounds. Both of our dogs are rescues, and we love them both very much. Bella was lost and found in the streets of Clearwater and was a victim. Heartworm, she was pregnant, and she was lost. Gibby Gibson was required back surgery before he came to live with us. And luckily, the national rescue that handles this breed spent over $5,000 giving this dog back surgery. So we're very, I was grateful to drive to Jackson, Mississippi to pick him up. I'm always aware of the fact that they're, that these are, that they're the dogs, just like any other, and they can react in a way that I may not anticipate. And that's why they're never off their leash when they're outside of our yard. We take them for a walk, not because they're bad dogs or I, or I think in any way they're aggressive, but I don't know how they'll react to other dogs. At the end of the day, they're dogs. They're runners, and when they have the opportunity, they run free in a dog park or in a fenced area. So that's a little bit about, I think we've heard a lot about the, the breed, but what, what I want to talk about is B. And again, Commissioner Sharif, thanks for setting that aside. Part B, this is a problem that's been made popular, at least, with this breed. The problem was made public a few years ago by a man who was, in my opinion, the lowest form of human being. I'm not saying that just because he's an Eagles, Eagles quarterback. Mr., Mr. Vic should be convicted, should have been convicted of nothing less than animal trafficking, animal cruelty, abuse, and murder. He should have been put in jail for life, and that's only if the judge was lenient. I would have advocated for worse. I would seek, as, as we talked about the penalties, I would seek the strictest penalties possible in our power and also seek to increase those penalties that we attack the problem, which is poor hu... which is poor human behavior and not banning a breed. I will encourage you, and I will take one issue and highlight this, and that is that Commissioner Kair is going to read a proclamation, but because of the outpouring of support and animal lovers here, we postponed our Good and Welfare. But one of the items was Broward County Animal Care to join the World Spay Day. Now, what we've done in Broward County to honor this event is animal care and adoptionist team of the local veterinary clinics to provide a free spay neutering service for five hundred pit bulls and pit bull mixes, whose owners may sign up for the surgery. The free spay neutering service will be available to all residents of Broward County who own an American pit bull terrier, Staffordshire terrier, Staffordshire bull terrier, American bulldog, or any dog mixed with any of these breeds. And what was, what was funness was the obvious situation of animal care was we had a lot of dogs who were in the bully breed and we wanna try to fix the problem. So with your participation in the many contacts you have in the, in the dog world and in the bully breed world, we'd like to encourage you to bring those dogs in and start to be part of the solution. And like everyone here has said, you can't fix poor human behavior. We really can only set policy here. It's really gonna be, in part B, up to enforcement. And we're gonna hopefully give the folks who do that all the tools necessary. But I think we're making a good step in the right direction today, and thank you for all being there.
Thank you, Commissioner Kair. Commissioner Wexler. That did, didn't it?
You did.
Commissioner Lamaca, Commissioner Wexler.
I too wanna thank you, Vice Mayor, for listening to the public here today and for, at least for the moment, and you did take very, very good notes, and Tori took very good notes, to include the public in future and potential conversations. I do wanna address motion A for just a moment, even though it's off the table. Because I think that it's, I really don't care what Hollywood is doing. I think that what Hollywood is offered, and by the way, it's been in their legislative program for years, which was supporting the ability to have ban specific legislation or home rule. And I think that one of the things that we need to absolutely consider is regionalization. Again, I'm back to that regionalization conversation. Because if we were ever to allow, if this state was ever to allow that home rule to let a city here or a city there, we'd have the same kind of situation occurring in our community known as Broward that happens in all of Miami-Dade County, and you know the impact on us. So I don't ever want to say just let a city decide. I think something of that magnitude has to be regional in approach. So I'm gonna give you my two cents on that one as we move forward. Secondly, there was a letter, an email that came into us. And I know it came to all of us, and I don't know if Alex Barcelos was here today to speak or not. I don't even know if Alex Barcelos is from Dade or Broward or some other place in this country. But boy, did he make a lot of sense. And he does not support ban specific legislation, and he is a pit bull and an animal lover. But he is making four recommendations. And I'm gonna hand this to you when I'm done. Have pit bulls be registered by their owners, and it's everything we heard here today, by the way. Have pit bulls be registered by their owners, making illegal to have an unregistered pit bull. Impose hefty fines or criminal charges on owners of pit bulls. Make it illegal to breed them, since there are so many oftentimes abandoned. It goes on to explain each category. And have registered pit bulls neutered so that there won't be any risk of breeding. And every one of these recommendations to me, at least from where I'm sitting, makes some sense. And I hope is somewhat considered as you move forward in your, in your moving in on this. I would also, I don't know, I don't know what the...
These are ideas. You had ideas, there's another conversation to come. And it's not about shutting down his ideas, it's about sharing them. Some will make it through the process, some will not. But you can't cry over everyone you don't like, okay? So calm down, there's a conversation yet to come, and you'll be a part of that. Commissioner Wexler.
Motion B is also motion to direct. And motion B's motion to direct nearly is talking about the, expanding and revising the definition of fighting dogs and increasing fines, et cetera. I think that some of the things that we heard today also need to be taken into consideration for the item when it comes back. And that's why I identified those four things. I think that you have a list of different things that were recommended to us today to also be considered, and some of them make a great deal of sense. And if we don't get serious about this, then shame on us. And I know that you are serious about this. The last thing, the last thing is enforcement. There are excellent rules on the books today. I don't believe that enforcement is happening from law enforcement, like it should. Law enforcement's attitude has been, it's not our problem, it's animal control's problem. And that really has gotta stop. And animal control probably needs a whole lot more folks in that division to get out there and enforce. And number twenty on today's agenda puts one more person out there. We have but one guard dog company registered in Broward County. I hope that that person who's hired in that funding that we're doing today actually is helping patrol your district in particular. And I really hope that that comes to fruition. And with that, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Commissioner Ritter.
Thank you. The good news for most of you is you get to go home when this is over. We're gonna be here for a long time. One of the speakers this afternoon came up and said, started her remarks with, "I hope that this commission comes with an open mind." I have to tell you that today I walked in here without an open mind. I was determined not to support asking the legislature to repeal its ban on pit bulls and associated breeds. I apologize, Commissioner Sharif, but it was further than I was willing to go today. And since you all, or many of you, showed us your pictures today, I'm showing you mine, okay? Now, they're not pit bulls. I will, I will address your concerns, madam, I promise you. Now, they're not pit bulls or related, they're King Charles Cavaliers. But they are rescues, their names are Cagney and Lacy. They were breeders. And by the age of two, when I was lucky enough to find them, they had bred multiple litters. And while they weren't bred to fight, they were bred to breed. And they came with issues, as do dogs when you... I don't cry about my kids. It must be hormones today. Or lack, at my age, it's lack of hormones. This is so embarrassing. They came with issues. They were very suspicious of men. Because as those of us who have rescued know, it's usually the man who abuses the dog in whatever capacity, not just physically, thank you.
You mean it wasn't Russ?
They weren't, they weren't real happy with my husband. He's a, well, I shouldn't say that, he's probably watching, so I'll... Here, love you, honey. But it took a lot of patience to, to reteach them what it was like to live with humans. And they are the most amazing animals. So if anybody tried to ban my breed, while they don't have the same media coverage that a pit bull does, if anybody tried to ban my breed, I'd probably be here all day today to scream in bloody hell about that. When I was a young, a younger woman, the Doberman was the bad dog. And I grew up here, been taught to fear the Doberman. Because every Doberman was a biter when I was a younger woman. And then it was the Lotwiler, which was the bad dog du jour. And then it was the German Shepherd, which was the bad dog du jour. And there's always a dog that sparks the attention of the masses as to which is the bad one. And the truth is that none of the three of those breeds are bad. They just have bad owners. And in my opinion, it's the same with the pit bull. And so, and I know, you know, y'all probably don't like we all put together under one large umbrella called pit bull, but to name them all, and the Shar Pei, really, how adorable is that dog? Nobody would even think that dog was even close to being a biter. Oh, my God, I don't know. I've been a dog owner since I was six, I think. Well, I wasn't the owner at the time, my mom and dad were. But had had dogs with me my whole life. And the most vicious dog I ever had was a Karen Terrier. Toto. Remember Toto? And I blame myself for that because I was not able to train that dog, even with assistance, the way that dog needed to be trained. And as a result, that dog bit. But I don't blame the dog for that, I blame myself. And no one would ever have thought that a Karen Terrier would bite anybody. And this dog bit. But this dog did not have a lockjaw, because dogs don't have lockjaws. I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound flip, but that's, that's just not something that any particular breed has. I have to commend the owners of the pit bull because you come to this with people already being prejudiced against you because of the dogs you've chosen to live with. And I think it takes a really special person to be able to raise and care for a dog that most, that many people are afraid of just by looking at them. And I thank you for being here today. I know that you've, we're gonna withdraw 52A and I'm really pleased about that. But I must tell you that if you bring it back in any shape or form like it is today, I won't be able to support it. I just do not believe that... I'm sorry. But, and I thank you for that, but I really just wanted the men to applaud me because the women applauded Marty. But I'll take, as a county commissioner, I'll take any applause I can get, I promise you. I also agree with Commissioner Wexler, though, that this is not the kind of ordinance or law that you want to pass on to cities to cover. While I am a firm believer in home rule, and as a former legislator, I can tell you legislators do things all the time, that we would oppose if it were ever covered in the press, which is not, because they're busy covering this today. This is not the issue that we want to make city-specific. And the reason for that is because what would happen is, if a city banned this breed, then the breed would get pushed to the next city, and then that city would ban it, just like what's happening in Miami-Dade, it would end up being in every other, every other city's problem. I don't think that's where we go. And I must say that this legislature, twenty-some odd years ago, passed this law. Had the foresight to understand that. And of course, that legislature was controlled by a different party than today. So that's probably why it had better foresight. Sorry, Commissioner Lamaca, apologize for that. But it was actually necessary for me to say that, so I... So I can't do that today. To the woman who is holding up the pictures as having been the victim of a vicious bite, I don't think anybody in this room, I think everyone in this room has sympathy for what you have been through, anyone who's been through the situation where a dog has been bitten. But I also believe that to blame the breed for it, I just can't go that far. Because as I've said, the Chihuahua is known as one of the most vicious dogs supposedly on the planet. And no one would ever look at a Chihuahua and think that that dog would bite. Again, I just think it's about the owner. And, no, you're right, I haven't been in the jaws and I'm very, very grateful that I have not. Although I have had a dog that has bitten somebody, and it has been very difficult. But as the responsible dog owner, I took responsibility. I cared for the person who got bit. I paid for the bills, I contacted my homeowner's insurance, I did everything I had to do to try to make that person whole. That was my responsibility. I did not blame the dog. I might've been pissed, but I didn't blame the dog. So if I let me say that, that 52B, I think is an incredibly responsible way to address this issue. I thank you again for all for being here. I know it's been a very long day. And you probably wonder why people do what we do when this is a normal Tuesday. But it's because of issues like this that need to be taken care of once and for all. And I hope that for today, we have put this one to bed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ritter.
I really feel that we all need to move on with the agenda rather than, it's really wonderful to get a lot of applause. But I remember, we used to let them just do this.
No, that's not doing it.
But that's not your style. But I don't, I really wanna be very brief so that we can get on with the agenda. I have problems with it being breed-specific. I really think dangerous dogs says a lot more than a specific breed because it means it was, most times, the owner's fault, not always. I was, when I was a child, we had a cocker spaniel. We got it when it was about two or three years old. We were able to keep it less than one year, and this was in a loving, caring family. We never let it bite anyone outside our house. But unfortunately, when anyone came to visit us who was not a member of our immediate family, my parents, my brother, and me, it bit them. So after a while, no matter what we did, could we stop this? We had to return the dog to the shelter that we had adopted it from because it became a dangerous dog within the confines of our home. Which says that you never know what type of breed is going to be dangerous. And I found out subsequently, years later, that this is a characteristic of cocker spaniels because they've been in blood so much. This is why they are biters. We did not know, you know, they, when you think of dog images, pit bull, dangerous, biter, cocker spaniel, sweet, cuddly, not true. Either one can go either way. And that's, you know, that's life. But thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sharif, for withdrawing A. I look forward to supporting B, and let's move on with the agenda.
Commissioner Hollins.
Yes.
Thanks.
Since we've debated this as much as we possibly can, let me say congratulations for your efforts, Vice Mayor Sharif, in bringing the item forward. You identified through the constituents that you represent that there was an issue in your community. And you seek to bring a solution to that, so I commend you for that. And I support your decision to go forward one portion and leave the other. So that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollis. Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Listening to all of this discussion this afternoon kinda reminded me, just a few months ago, I had finished my election and as Commissioner Kair did, knocked on thousands of doors, I met more dogs than people. And I never met a dog that liked me before the owner came to the door. I mean, they were just doing their job. But after the owner would open the door, there was never a dog that wasn't friendly. And it's really all about the owners, and I think that's something that we've learned and it's really been repeated over and over, and it's something for us to remember. So Mayor, if you're ready, I'm ready with 52B.
Well, I think we have to leave that on for Vice Mayor, if you don't mind. And I did just want to echo a comment, Vice Mayor, that somebody in the audience said earlier today, which was that they believed your intentions were noble. And I wanted to add to that, that there are...